First item on the agenda is seem to prove it.
Yeah, I was looking at it.
The first item on the agenda is seem to prove it.
The first item on the agenda is seem to prove it.
Yeah.
Did Jason make the motion to set the agenda?
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you. Appreciate y'all being here tonight. And we got a lot of business tonight and we're moving through. Staff is prepared and thank you all for what you've done to be prepared tonight also. So getting started, first thing, we have our bus camera system. We hear a lot about transportation and busing. And I know last night there was some concern about the roads. And thank you, Mr. Gillyard, for your leadership and your staff and all of our bus drivers for making sure that all the students were delivered safely this morning. We just appreciate all your efforts with what you do and your drivers do to operate your mechanics and everybody to make it all work. So thanks.
Thanks, Tim.
Yes, sir. And Mr. Gillyard has a new camera system that was installed back in December on all of our buses. And this technology allows us to see what's going on on the buses and hear what's going on on the buses. And so we wanted to give the board members a demonstration tonight of the new technology that's on all of our buses. So, Mr. Gillyard, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
I'll show you what I know. I kind of self-taught myself with this new camera system. But this, of course, in the morning time, it's infrared. You see kids here? Is that clear it is? Let me get over there. It's daylight. There's no better picture. Got a five-camera system outside the front windshield.
Can't have a house asleep from your camera.
Sure. Get on the bus. If you want to show a parent, for whatever reason, they want to come in and see what their child was doing on the bus, you can bar everybody else out. I can't get it do on this machine. I can't get it reversed on theirs. Anyway, supposed to be able to block this guy up here where everybody's turned out, but I can't get it on this. You're teleporting. Put a map over there.
So that shows the location.
That location? You have a parent calls that your bus been coming by my house this morning, like before this, and see exactly where that bus went? If she did actually stop at the house? Just give a little graphic on here. Her top speed is sixty-six mile an hour at some point. But her route, her route speed is thirty-five. It also shows right here. So the temperature of the bus, the actual bus temperature, motor temperature. This here shows when she does a stop, she'll turn her yellow warning zone. Then she asks to make a stop, a red one, light come on. And I use this whenever I see if they're actually doing their walk around. They're preaching respect in the morning time, because if they don't do it, these lights won't light up. So I use it for, kind of teaching to them myself. Driver has a problem, I kind of bring him in and we go over the camera and see what he done or not. Did he do wrong? Have any question? Maybe I'm not watching. Any question on that? Is it working well? Very well.
I'm ready with that one zoomed. Zoom right here on this.
Is this a zoom?
I've got it on every, every bus.
Every bus we have has this camera. We do appreciate y'all personing in for it, because it has helped us a lot. I've actually had a couple parents come in and look at their child. It's really helped the driver also.
Have you caught any instances of anybody blowing through the red lights or anything?
I haven't. I have not. I have really haven't looked at that. I don't know the legal side of that. You got the actual prosecutor, the camera wants to get the car, so we have used that.
Did you say the car, the bus running and stopping?
No.
The car.
Car running through. Through the bus when it's dropping the child off.
Oh, okay.
There's a button here. We couldn't get it to work. There's a button here. You, you hit it. You can actually email or text to the parent. Bar everybody else out, send an email or text to the parent, say this is what your child is cutting the seat. This is your child riding on the seat.
And that feature does work. We just upgraded this computer to Windows 10, and we've got some drivers to install for that to work here. But we weren't able to pull that off for this meeting, but it does work.
This is kind of a quiet plus. It's hard to demonstrate. Every picture you click on, it goes to that microphone and that camera. See, it sounds really great.
So it's got audio?
It's got audio. You about to tell, you about to tell us, we ain't texting ourselves. Sorry, you, you talking about zooming up front?
Well, I was talking about, why don't you just be zooming in on the child?
Wow.
It's very impressive.
Yeah, we're lucky. We're permanent.
Can you read?
He's reading. He won't know. When'd he get his name?
On the, with the front view camera of the road, have you had a situation where you've been able to share information with the county road department or anything like that where you've got?
Just the past week, road washed out, and I called Donald Stokes. Told him, well, I seen off camera, they fixed it right away. We got good work done. I like the more, Mr. Ware uses it more for discipline. I use it more for teaching tool for a driver. We both got TVs in our office now. They can come sit down. I can say, this is what you done. This is what you, to him. I wasn't doing that.
And the liability that right there with that front view, somebody pulls out in front of the driver, that, that will pay for itself if heaven forbid somebody pulls out in front of them.
Any question? Come a long ways. Long way. I didn't get permission by all these parents.
Why do you drive me about that?
That's the advancement with technology.
That's right.
If I had that back in nineteen ninety-seven, I could minimize problems immediately, because I would have proof to show what actually happened.
But we want to help the parents and we want to help the driver too. I mean, this is gonna work both ways.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you for doing that.
Do you know off the top of your head how many children are transported daily on average?
Around four thousand. Twenty-five hundred miles. A good. Thank y'all. Appreciate it, bud. I gotta go to my next one. Thank y'all. See you. Michael.
Bus camera demonstration. Next item on the agenda are the minutes from our last monthly meeting, the January meeting. I'm gonna take a minute to look over those. Please, as the board will place these minutes on the consent agenda for the regular meeting. The next item that we have on the agenda is the financial report. We have the finance director, Ms. Tracy Yawn, here to just present the financial report. So our first document is the financial report. Ms. Yawn, you want me to take over?
Yes, sir. This is our report for fiscal year twenty twenty. And you can see, this report goes through January thirty-first of twenty. We began the fiscal year with a fund equity balance of fourteen million nine hundred and fifty thousand two hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-five cent. And we have ended the month of January with a fund balance of twenty-one million four hundred and eighty-three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and fifteen cents.
All right, next document. This is the comparison report. And this gives you an idea of how we compare to the, this month last year. It's pretty descriptive in regards to a lot of information over multiple years. Any questions about that? This is the detailed report. It's in the more detail in the different categories. She'll walk us through that report.
Yes, sir. The revenue is the first detailed item. It goes through our local and our state revenues and our federal that we have received thus far through the month of January. So the total revenues received through the month of January is the thirty-one million one hundred and seventy-eight thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty cents. So we're at fifty-four percent, fifty-four point seventy-five percent of our budget. This is the expenditure detail with the different functions of the school system. For January, our expenditures total, thirty-two million six hundred and forty-four, sixty, six hundred and forty-five thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars and eleven cents. And the percentage of the budget is the forty-five point forty-five percent that we have completed. You see, we have a cash balance of twenty-one million four hundred and seventy thousand eight hundred and forty dollars and sixty-two cents. And the fund equity is twenty-one million four hundred and eighty-three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and four cents.
If there's no questions, we've got the EPOS report. This does end the year, or as far as the, as far as December. Gives us January. January this year looking good. And our total for nineteen is good. Expenditures to date. Does that include buses in there somewhere? Do you know how much we spent on buses?
As far as forward, please.
What we working on forward? What we looking at? Yeah, as far as forward.
It shows one point two million that we spent. I can verify that amount, though.
If there's no questions, then we'll place the financial report on the consent agenda for a regular board meeting. Out-of-state travel. We have a number of out-of-state travel requests. Nichols-Salem Elementary School, sixty students are going to the Museum of Science and History. Tennis team has been invited to work as fall kids at the Miami Open. Eastside. Requesting to go to Jacksonville to tour animals and reptiles and their habitat. Irish group is requesting to go to Orlando for the state festival reward trip. Apple Woods is requesting to take five of the earth cadets to Washington DC in Quantico, Virginia. Indian Creek is requesting to send students to tour the candy company, learn about production packaging, Sweet Peets in Jacksonville. I guess we're not concerned about the coronavirus? We met about the coronavirus this morning with our nurse. Had a nursing, Dr. Banks and Ms. Miller, on sale. We reviewed information from the State Department of Health and the Georgia Department of Education. We sent out a notice to our principals and to our central office directors from the State Department of Education and Department of Health. And our head of nursing is in contact with the local health department officials to review our protocol for coronavirus in regards to travel. We did not, we've not discussed that at this point. There's been no travel advisory. We're not sending students. If something like that is issued, we would certainly heed the notice and follow the protocol. But at this point, no, sir, there's, we did not consider canceling this travel for that. We are watching, we are watching it closely. Yes, sir. Good question. It is certainly on everybody's mind, and we'll see, see how it goes forward.
Is that something we can discuss with retreat tomorrow?
Yes. All right. Title one, part A, school improvement. Ms. Kim Miller, Assistant Superintendent, will provide information for board on title one, part A. Ms. Miller?
Can I just sit right here?
That's fine. Whatever.
If you recall, last year, we had a school improvement grant that we shared with you from one of our other schools. And we were notified just before Thanksgiving, actually, from the State Department, that Westside Elementary was on the target, targeted support list with, for their subgroup, students with disabilities. So basically what happens, they will receive support from Okefenokee RISA student support staff. They support improvement for the schools, and with that comes some money. So Westside was awarded seventy-five thousand dollars to implement some strategies specifically for their students with disabilities subgroup. So we are working with the Georgia Department of Education and Okefenokee, Okefenokee RISA support staff as a team, including some GLRS staff, and trying to really look at what we can do to improve achievement with our students with disabilities. So I will say, even though Westside is getting the money, while we're making improvements at Westside, we're trying to also share those improvements and strategies with our whole district, so everybody will benefit in the end. So it's really just an information item that we have received that money, and we are budgeting it for improvement of instruction and strategies with students, for students with disabilities.
All right. Any questions? All right. Title one, part A, school improvement. Westside will receive seventy-five thousand dollars. That's good news.
Yeah, actually, we've already received the money. The money has to be spent by September thirtieth. Should we remain on the list, she will receive additional funds, so.
What does it have to be? Staff? Can it be used for staff?
It can be used for staff, but we just have to keep in mind that it won't be sustainable. It will just be for the lifetime, the lifespan of the money. So she is looking at some, maybe some intervention folks to help with those students with disabilities.
Next item on the agenda comes from the nutrition department. And we have Ms. Dawn Lewis here tonight to talk with us about bids in the nutrition department. Ms. Lewis?
The first bid I have for your review is the non-slip shoe bid. And this is new. It's, it's not new. We're already purchasing shoes individually. The employees are going out purchasing shoes, and then we're reimbursing them when they bring the receipt. I chose this year to bid it out and do a bulk purchase for shoes. And we sent the bid out. We had one response, which was from SR Max Vulcan Safety Shoe Company. They are located in Savannah, and they have a guarantee. And it's in the restaurant industry, you have to have a non-slip, skid-resistant shoe that's required. So this shoe meets all those recommendations. They have different styles. And what'll happen if the board approves it is the employees will come in during pre-planning, and the company will come with their shoe truck. They'll try on the shoes. They'll give them their shoes, and the employee is not fronting the money for the shoes and then us reimbursing them. But it also guarantees me that we do have the true shoe that is needed for the safety of the employee as well. So it is my recommendation that we do go to this type of bulk purchase rather than letting the employees purchase individually. And the shoe company also has a five thousand dollar indemnity policy that covers an accident per employee if there's a slip, trip, or fall with their shoes on.
All right.
Questions?
I mean, this is an expense we've already got.
Yes. This is an expense we've already got. We're just consolidating it into one purchase versus employees purchasing. The next bid is our chemical and product services for next year. This is the chemicals and cleaning supplies that we use to keep our kitchens safe and sanitary. They also furnish a monthly inspection to help us with health inspections from the health department. And we are currently using the company that, we only have one bid return, and we're currently using this company, and have had no problems, no issues with the company. And I'm proud to say that all of our health scores are above ninety-five. So we, we know that this, this company is doing a great job for us.
Please, the board? Any places on the consent agenda? All right. And then the last item under nutrition is really good news. Ms. Lewis, you want to share your letter with the board?
Dr. Lewis received a letter from the State Department reviewing our review that we had in November. There were no critical findings in the review, so we were very pleased with that. There were four corrective action findings with the review, and I will just, they were basically, we've already submitted most of the correction action, if not a plan. One of them was just a, an accounting issue where the, it was needed to go to a different fund code. So that's already been corrected. The other was with our medical statement for students who need meal modifications due to medical issues. It did not have the complete civil rights statement on it. We've already corrected that as well. The last two are from last school year, and one of them is what they call a non-program food compliance, where they go and look at any à la carte sales and what you've actually purchased. And with that, our meal, our à la carte prices were not high enough to cover those expenses. I've since gone in, reviewed everything that's à la carte, and adjusted the prices. We advertised the price increase to students in December, and we went up on the prices in January. And I will continue to monitor this for next year, because we'll have to submit another one in May to the state to prove that we have corrected that. But that is à la carte sales only, so that's if a student wants to purchase anything extra. That has nothing to do with the meal. The last corrective action was the adult meal prices. And currently, our plate costs, when, when I arrived in October, was averaging three dollars and thirty-one cent a plate. And we're only charging adults three dollars to eat. I asked the state to give me some time to reduce the meal plate cost per plate. And I'm proud to say that we're hovering right now around two dollars and ninety-eight cent. So we may not have to raise adult meal prices, but I will continue to monitor this. But for the last three months, the highest plate cost has been two dollars and ninety-eight cent on average for the district. They did have several commendations that they were well pleased. One of them was with Brockston, and this is, this is the staff at Brockston Elementary School, the whole entire staff. They, and said that that was one of the best wellness plans that they had seen. So I, my, I'm just very pleased with Brockston Elementary and the hard work that they've done with their wellness program and the whole staff. The, they've made comments on Westside Elementary and how interactive the entire staff, not only the cafeteria, but the teachers and students, and how interactive they were with the students and mealtime, so they were very pleased with that. They were very accommodating on Satilla Elementary and how clean it was at the age of the school, and how organized and how efficient, and how well our staff, as well as the faculty, were interacting with the children during lunch. They commended George Washington Carver on the food. They commended George Washington Carver on the food and the tape. They actually had meals at that campus while they were here, so they were very pleased with that. And they were also excited about the offering of fresh fruits and vegetables. The amount that we offered to students, they did ask that we provide more cut items in the fresh fruit department, but overall, they were pleased with that. And then they were well pleased with the central office staff and how well that we handled their needs. Thank you. It was a glowing light for us. Very pleased.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. And I do want to publicly commend Ms. Lewis for coming in middle of the year and assuming the job and taking the reins over the Nutrition Department and doing a great job. Kind of an awkward time, having to come in and take over the Nutrition Department. We were excited that Ms. Lewis came back to Coffee County and just excited to have her back. And I told her it's proof you can always go home, you know? So, great job. Yes, ma'am. All right. Nutrition review. The next item on the agenda is the technology. And we have Dr. Noel here to describe our technology initiatives.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Lee. I've got several items for your consideration tonight. The first one is E-Rate project bids. I came to you last month to let you know that we had some unexpected funding available to us and I laid out three projects that we wanted to pursue with that funding. And we did post RFPs last month. We opened bids on Tuesday of this week and we have some recommendations for you. The first project was a caching server. This is a caching, this is a server that would sit on our network and is basically going to hold content that we access frequently, especially large files, media, video, things like that. So, every time a student wants to pull down a video from instructional program or from the internet, it's not having to go out and pull it over the full network and out to the internet pipe every time. It's going to store it locally. So, we only, we specified the make and model, the type of service we want. We only had one provider bid on that. That came in about $15,000 under what we were projecting. It came in $43,402 from Borderland Security. And of that, it is 100% E-Rate eligible, which means we would qualify for our maximum discount. Of that cost, E-Rate would pay $36,891.70. Our 15% portion, which will come from East Plots, would be $6,510.30. We have worked with this company for about five years with our content filter and they do a great job with that excellent support. We've never had any trouble with these products or services from this company. So, we do ask that everyone place on the consent agenda tonight. Any questions about that? All right. The next one, this is the larger project. And I told you we were going to make that money go as far as we can make it go. We may not have enough money to fully fund the upgrades we want to do this funding year and that is the way it works out. We had four vendors respond to this project. This is our network infrastructure upgrade. That consists of all our network switches as well as our wireless network. It's time to do some upgrades to those. Our switches are eight, nine years old. Our wireless network is about four and a half years old now, which is an eternity in terms of technology. We specified Aruba, which is, has been recently purchased by HP. So, it's Aruba slash HP. That was a brand that we quoted. We demoed probably five or six different platforms and this is the one that my staff feels the most comfortable with and they thought it would be the best solution for us. It lets us manage the wired and the wireless network from one central console. Excuse me, instead of having to go to two or three different tools to manage your different components of your network, it puts it all in one view, a lot simpler integration, a lot simpler management. They do have lifetime warranty on the network switches. So, anytime that those need replacing, we can call and have a replacement component next day. The other thing we like about Aruba, as you notice, is it's a chassis architecture. It's basically a box with modular blades that plug in there. So, if we need more fiber ports, we just pop a fiber modulator instead of buying all these switches as fiber ports. So, it's flexible, it's modular. Of the four bids we received, we had two that quoted alternative equipment. PC Solutions and Integration came in with a much lower price, but they quoted Extreme, which is formerly Aerohive Equipment. Micro Technology Consultants quoted a Serupus Equipment. Of the two that quoted, the Aruba HP, as we had asked for, CDWG and Cloud 59 Networks. Cloud 59 came in with the best price on that. The wireless component came in just under what we expected, $314,379. And the network switch, the wired component, came in a little bit higher than we were anticipating due to the number of switches required. So, that is our recommendation. However, we can't do all that in the first year, so I've got to break down kind of what we would project to do here. These are the same numbers I brought down from the previous slide. You notice I've got the switch upgrade grade out there. We can't do that. We're going to do, we're recommending we do the caching server, the wireless upgrade, and a portion of our switches. Of that $1,098,861, we would like to do the balance of our funding for this year, which will be $630,705, and then come back in funding year '21. Next year, we'll get about $1.2 million in E-Rate funds. We'd like to come back the following year and finish up that switch upgrade, $468,156 out of next year's E-Rate budget. So, of that, the wireless E-Rate component will be $267,222, leaving the local responsibility $47,158. And the wired component of that $630,000, E-Rate would pay $536,99, leaving us a local responsibility of $94,606. And the summary of that, that's how it's broken down. The total budget we have available, including E-Rate and local funds, is $988,46. And of that, you see the breakdown for each, each component of that. So, that's how we're recommending we spend our E-Rate allocation this year.
For the other equipment, just not any good?
The other brands, it's, we don't think it has the features that we need to manage it. Aruba HP is geared more toward the education environment. Again, that single interface that we can manage both sides, none of the others offer that. Those, the other two do not offer lifetime replacements on the equipment. Nobody's going to do that on wireless components, but the wired switches, HP or Aruba, is next day replacement, as long as we.
Or you have to go from that $988 this year and then $1.2 next year?
Right.
How do they figure that?
It's a per-student cost over a five-year cycle. And they change the formula every few years, but the current, I forget how many, they've got a dollar a night per SDU that they give us the next funding year. We'll set the level of $1.2 is what they're projecting now.
You use Cloud 59 Networks before?
Cloud 59 Networks is based out of Lakeland, Georgia. Matt Boyett is engineer. If we ever have a major network problem that we need outside help to fix, Matt's the good guy that we call in. Matt was with another company that installed our systems.
But they don't work for us before?
Yeah. Matt's worked with us, he was working with the district before I came here in 2011. So, he's, he, most of the networking equipment here now, he installs and configures.
Is this equipment basically everything you see like in the racks down there in our server room and?
Where you see a network closet, we've got an MDF, which is the main distribution frame at every site. Of course, we just stick it in the media center and then down the halls, either in closets in our newer schools or in front of the classrooms in some of the older buildings, you see that rack that's enclosed, it's got all the whirring fans.
It's all the equipment that's on those racks.
Right.
I'm asking servers, do we still incorporate?
We don't have nearly as many servers as we have in the past. More and more, the software is moving out to the cloud or implementing the campus or nutrition software. Soft docs is now E-treat. So, a lot of this, desktops and library tools, all those things, at one point, we had a server, four servers running those in the data center or at a school location and all those are gone now. So, the amount of hardware in our data center is shrinking as more and more services move out to the cloud.
That's what, because 10, 15, 20 years ago, we'd been buying a lot of servers.
Right.
So, the total, the total you're asking for is about $148,000 based on our local obligation?
Yes.
For now, yeah.
For now, for small.
For this year. Remember next year, right? But that's maximizing E-Rate eligibility by doing.
So, we would pay 15% of that $988,46. And E-Rate would pay the other 85%.
Where does, where does that keep those within the current East Plots? Do we got flexibility?
Yeah, we look down for this.
And I present this tonight asking for approval on the consent agenda because the following deadline is the day before the March meeting. So, I need to get this submitted before you meet again. Any questions on the E-Rate project?
Technology bids.
All right. In addition to the E-Rate, we do have some ongoing technology projects. I mentioned EC last month as well. We put an RFP out for 500 Chrome Boxes and the management licenses to run those on the network. And as you can see, we had a huge response on that. We had 25 submissions and price, the total price, we actually put the Chrome Box, the license, and a video adapter on there. But the prices, as you'll see in a minute, were, there's a wide range of prices on the video adapter. We had one company out of Jacksonville, that's the only thing they wanted to bid on, and they were way beyond, way below the others. So, we ended up pulling that out. And our recommendation is to just get the Chrome Boxes and the license from Harry Jones Educational Solutions. We have been buying from this company for about four years, our Chrome devices. They provide excellent service. They don't use freight companies. They deliver all their equipment with their own company vehicles and warranty repairs. They'll come pick them up and either swap them out or repair them on site for us. We've had nothing but great customer service out of this company. Our recommendation is to go with Harry Jones Educational Solutions for the Chrome Boxes for a total of $110,230. Any questions on that? They were not the low bidder, but we have vetted the low bidder in the past and we just, we feel better going with the company that has serviced well the best. All right. Next item, this is the video adapter that I mentioned before. We've put all three of these items in the package and you can see the range there. Nine to Five Computer Supply out of Jacksonville doesn't sell Chrome Boxes or licenses, but they do sell computer accessories. Their bid per adapter was $5.95. And when we pulled all the other adapters out of that bid package, you see the next low bid was $9 and all the way up to $39.88 for that same device. So, we want to buy those, pull those out of the RFP and purchase those separately from Nine to Five Computer for $2,970. And the last item that we have for bid, these are our desktop computers and monitors. These will replace the remainder of our teacher desktops and will also increase the, right now, they've got the small square 17-inch monitors. This will boost all of these up to a 22-inch widescreen monitor. And as you see, we had a strong response from that. So, we had 24 bids submitted and we have been buying almost exclusively refurbished computers for the last several years for the cost savings. And we do, we did specify the Dell 9020 small form factor, which has been out for a while, but is still a solid machine. That's what we've got in most locations now. And SES Education, we've been buying for from, from the last several years. It's not a low bidder, as you see there, but if you look at the warranty, they have a lifetime warranty on those things. Ideally, we replace our computers every three or four years in an educational setting. That typically goes much longer than that. Some of the computers we're pulling out right now are 10 years old. We have patched them, we've upgraded them with memory and hard drives and we just, realistically, we're going to have these for more than five years. So, that lifetime warranty is going to guarantee that if something major in that device goes bad, they're going to replace it. If they don't have any more of those components, they're going to give us the next newest model of PC to replace it. Their warranty policy, return policy, we sent them an email with a serial number and the part is bad. We get one within usually two days, we have a replacement part. With this number, they use, they'll probably send us 15 extra units to have parts on hand. So, company's been great to work with. We did check out some of the others, especially the two that were lower than them that had a five-year warranty. One just had a 90-day warranty on the monitor. One of those is in New Jersey, one's in Texas, and I could not find anyone in the state of Georgia that has worked with these companies before. Their testimonials on their website seem to indicate that they're more of a retail seller. People are talking about buying a single laptop for their college student or three desktops for a small business. I just, I haven't been able to find anyone that's found any significant warranties from them. So, we just feel comfortable staying with STS with a lifetime warranty. So, that's our recommendation to go.
When I saw lifetime warranty, I wondered what, and you just described it, but how long a period did that go out to replace?
We have not had any problems yet. They're telling us that they've bought enough of these computers off-lease that they've got a warehouse full of full units and parts. And if there becomes a time where they can't supply some other board, the power supply or any component that's bad, they'll send us a new one.
When you were referring to not being able to find anybody that had used them in the testimony, or she were specifically referring to the low bidder in that, it's one of those companies?
Actually, the low bidder, I looked at all of them, the two that had the five-year warranty, the low bidder and then this discount PC. I checked into those and not a lot out there on them. And that's, that's my recommendations for purchase.
Recommend that we place that on the consent agenda, the vote at the regular month of need immediately following this meeting?
And I have one more item. Have some surplus property. As we're replacing these in-computing devices with Chrome Boxes and Chromebooks, we are filling up our warehouse with the old in-computing boxes and monitors to go along with those. So, we would like to declare those surplus and place those out for auction on www.bills.com.
If it pleases the board, we will place it on the consent agenda. And I do want to say I appreciate your approval of this and looking out for taxpayers and working to get the best, not only the best deal, but the best equipment for the money. Thank you. I will say that it was time for me to upgrade my PC laptop at my desk, this Chromebook. I do have one that runs Windows also. And so, Shane got me a new laptop and I took it home though. And I noticed when I moved it and picked it up, it did say refurbished on the back. And so, I knew he was looking out for us. He's in the refurb's. So, all right. 2020, 2021 school calendar. Ms. Miller?
So, last month, I presented three proposals for a calendar and you all charged me with sharing those with the teachers, all three of them, which I did. I created a form for them to complete and Google. And this is the feedback that we received. I sent it out first on January 28th. I reminded everybody in February and landed. I closed it on February 14th. And this is, we had 413 responses. This is, we had four hundred and thirteen responses. We have many more staff members than that, but that's who voted. And three hundred and forty-four of those four hundred and thirteen, um, voted for Calendar A. Mr. Gilyer did poll his bus drivers and he said it was, they chose Calendar A as well, so I'm proposing to you tonight that we adopt Calendar A, which is the calendar that you see here, for our twenty-twenty-one school year calendar. This has us beginning school on August seventh and ending school on May twenty-first. A hundred and eighty student days, eighty-nine in the first semester and ninety-one in the second semester.
We've spent way too much time talking about time talking about that. They'll tell you what they want.
I will say that I did have, I, I got lots of feedback and-
I was going to ask, was there any commentary?
There was some feedback, but most of them, the feedback, they chose, one reason they chose this is because of the February four-day weekend. Um, I did have some suggestions, could we go ahead and do two years at a time with our calendar? So, I have FY twenty-two, I do have one somewhat ready, not to share with you tonight. Looks a lot like this, um, so if you're interested in that, I can present to that, that to you later, if you want to.
I mean, we don't, we don't have a lot that changes drastically between year to year, do we?
We don't. It really just depends on how the dates fall in the calendar, and I know that sounds crazy, you still have three hundred and sixty after even a year, but it just depends on how they fall.
I mean, we already know what those test dates are, that's the whole.
Some, um, for the most part, we kind of have a general idea. They do put those out a couple of years in advance, but um, one suggestion, or not one, several people commented that they would like to see the four-day weekend, um, in October as opposed to February. So I will tell you, and one for twenty-twenty-two, or twenty-one-twenty-two that I've kind of played with, I was able to put the fall, the four-day fall break rather than the winter break, but you can't have both. It just doesn't work with the start date. You know, when we push our start date back, like we do, um, you just, you only have so many days to work with us, I shared with you before, but, um, you know, if you are interested-
All day was why we changed Veterans Day.
Veterans Day is not in, and it's not in, I mean, it's not holiday in this calendar.
We used not to be, and then we changed it, and that's where your fall break, we lost a day there.
Yeah, um, we do have a, a Friday out in October, um, but we didn't put this, this calendar. There was a, a choice with, um, Veterans Day in there, or Veterans Day break, and I think it fell on November sixth. Veterans Day is, um, November eleventh, normally, most people, the banks and might not usually, um, close the bank for rent on the day. Uh, you put, uh, sorry, on the day, even if it's in the middle of the week.
Well, we got a lot of them, we, we did it, like, we taught a lot of veterans, there's a lot of like being in school on that day where they can go in and do their programs and that kind of stuff.
There, a lot of our schools do have programs, um, and the veterans come, and the veterans come and, um, you know, it's a great, up there with several programs, and this did, and it's all the programs, and it's a great celebration, and it's a great day to honor those men and women who have served our country, so. Do you have any other question?
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And the next item on the agenda is Naviance. And, uh, Ms. Miller, you want to talk about this program?
I will, and this is a program that I, from, I think you all may have seen it at GSVA. And we had the representatives come and do a presentation for a group, including some of our, um, middle school and high school counselors, because this program is a six-twelve program. And, um, so basically, Shannon, if you'll go to the next slide. And this shows you how many students they serve in the nation. They're a nationwide program. Thirteen million plus students, five thousand plus educators, you can see that, so they're very well-known in this. It's actually a career, um, pathway to help bridge the, the, the schools and the career. I mean, there's lots of caveats to this program, and I'll share that with you in a few minutes. So, on this slide, you can see the partnerships that they have in the state of Georgia. Um, some real well-known districts and are getting some good results out of this program. Park County, Fortin County, Bev County, North Quinet High School, you can see, some are just high schools and some are actually in Park County, Fortin County. Thank you, skip some slides, they've changed, that's the last one. She feels slide great. There, slide five, turn it up. Okay, so here, it shows you the framework and the platform for, for Naviance. It's actually a college career and life readiness framework that's research-based. And it has six, six competencies that students six-twelve must achieve to become college career and life-ready. And you know, in our strategic plan, it's all about becoming college and career-ready. Um, so these are the six competencies, self-knowledge, which, on that, it really looks at your strengths and your weaknesses, and I know you all have heard, um, through us talk about U-Signs that they do over at the freshman campus, that can be part of this. In the middle school, they start with their career awareness and they actually, um, develop a bridge plan. And right now, that plan is going into a platform that doesn't follow them. So, by having this platform, we would have a place, a hub, if you will, that would, um, keep everything. Through this, they're able to look at their learning styles, they're able to apply to colleges, they're able to fill out their FASFA form. If you have had students or children that have gone off to college, that can be quite an ordeal, so, um, there's ways to apply to colleges through this. I mean, it just offers a lot, and it's just a hub that kind of keeps everything in one location. Our counselors were very excited about this when they saw it, and we actually got feedback from them, and it was great feedback. That's why we're here in front of you tonight, to present it to you. So, when you think about the student impact, um, their self-discovery, just really looking at their strengths and personality type, to kind of see what they may want to be when they grow up. Career exploration, being able to look at different careers, different salaries, different, um, just different aspects of a career. Then academic planning, thinking about where they are in high school, where they want to go after high school, applying for colleges, as I said, in college planning. Um, really looking at the different colleges in, in the state of Georgia, as well as outside the state of Georgia. And then there's the soft and non-cognitive success skills, which includes perseverance, financial planning, but some of those really soft skills that we hear from our business partners, that some of our students would really be benefiting from that in the workplace, had they had that. So then the counselor impact, um, through this platform, they're able to have everything, as I said, in a hub or a centralized place. Contact information, college career interests, test scores, GPA, scholarship information, outcomes, interactions. They can build personalized action plans, um, create short-term tasks and set long-term goals, document student progress with an online journaling tool, and so on and so forth. So, they can also build in custom surveys, so if there were surveys that needed to be done, they could build those in for students through this platform. As well as, there are some reports that can be pulled, um, identifying and intervening with adverse students as early as possible. So, that was, um, uh, one thing that our counselors was, was really interested in. So, that nationwide impact, three percent higher college acceptance rate and three point six percent higher college persistence rate. So we've, we've been talking a lot about SB two and students going to college and that kind of thing, and staying in college once they start, or once they start doing the dual enrollment continuing, so maybe with this program, with this, with that persistence, maybe we could see students really stay at the doors and, and finish college. So then the district impact, support students and families, um, engage families and with resources. I hear lots of times that parents can't find certain things, you know, whether it be in the parent portal, or whether it be looking for a college application, or whether it be trying to fill out a FASFA form. This is an opportunity for us to have that one stop shop for them to be able to do everything. Um, align with twenty-first century skills, there's a scope and sequence with ability to track and measure progress. Of course, it's always good, it would be good for us with data, to look at data, because this will be, this program would allow us to track students after they graduate, and as long as we have the program, our students, even after they graduated, can access their information and access their platform through the program. So, this is kind of just a, sums it up, of all the, um, aspects of Naviance. It is the only college career and life readiness platform, and, um, it's great for students and families to have that one place to do everything. And, and as well as for counselors and teachers to really work with students for looking at career planning and, um, in-school and outside once they leave us for secondary, um, schools. So Shannon, now you'll pull up the proposal.
Question?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Did we not already offer this to them?
We don't have this, this-
I'm not talking about all of them on spot, I mean-
We, um-
We don't, our counselors don't guide these kids?
They do, they do guide, but we've just heard from parents that they have a hard time locating information and finding information. And, um, this would be an opportunity for us to have a platform that would fill that need for, for our parents, our students, as well as help for counselors. Um, one of our counselors really, I mean, like, if, if I were a student and I'm on it, I can, if I had a question or concern or something, this, the, the counselor could actually see from her login that a student has their hand raised. So then she could intervene with that student to try to see what, maybe the student wasn't able to get to the counselor, but the teach, the counselor could actually reach out to the student to provide the help for him. So, um, it has lots of different components to it that our counselors were quite excited about when, um, we looked at it.
Is it even bothering our research managers?
Um, not according to the district, the school districts that have it.
So that was more like a live chat?
Um, I don't think it's a live chat, I just think it, I mean, it, when he showed it to us, it was just like a hand raise. And so, if I were that student and you were the counselor and you saw that on your platform, you could reach out to me and see, you know, maybe what, what I needed, but it's, um, they did, there is like a virtual part of it that, um, because I heard one of them say, that's like virtual counseling. So, um, they were just real excited, um, about it when we had the presentation.
So is that responding right to them, is that meaning, um, um, through their emails or phone calls, or how they're responding?
If I remember correctly, um, Ms. Wilkerson, they can respond through the platform, but it's more about reaching out to that student to provide that, that assistance to, to, whether it be help with whatever, you know, maybe they need help with a college application or locating their FASFA, whatever it shall be. The, the student would be able to, um, inform the counselor just by their platform that they need assistance, so.
I'm kind of with Jessie on some of it seems, I'm confused about line, because Jessica Baker came and talked to us about what they're doing right now for the testing and everything to get ready for the career academies, and so if we're doing some of that within this, isn't there some duplicity in that?
It would, it would all be in this one platform, U-Signs, everything could be imported into this, so it wouldn't be like one, we wouldn't have different-
So what if we stopped using this at some point in U-Signs, are we still going to have that integration then? I mean-
You would, um, at that point, you would just go back to where, what we're using now.
Well, if you're integrating them, if you're putting U-Signs and, you have to make sure they're compatible, and so what if you ever stopped using one or the other? You would have to, she's using the term U-Signs, I'm referring to whatever, Jessica, I assume that's U-Signs. Or she, that, that, you know, they can come and talk to us about his daughter taking the test.
It's U-Signs.
Yeah, so that's in me, seemed as, very similar to what beginning of this product did.
It is, and Jessica was at the, we, we had about thirteen, fourteen individual school counselors, and Jessica was one of the participants here to see it, and she got, I, I don't want to put words in her mouth, but she seemed pretty excited about, because it's going to, when the kids come into sixth grade, they're going to be issued an account, and then they will build on that account to seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade, and it integrates with the information system, so their transcript will be imported, it will be pulled, it's not imported. It, daily, it runs updates, and their transcript will be in the system, their grades will be in the system, their schedule for the next year. They, the parents can look and see it, the course progression, and then talk with their kids about next classes that they want to take. And so, it, it does a lot of different pieces that we've never really been able to pull together, and the counselors, like that middle school is doing this bridge, uh, piece, and it's in a different platform than the ninth grade's doing the bridge piece, so they're not, they're having to do a lot of stuff by hand. This'll, this'll make it all seamless, and so.
But for us to fully utilize it, we're going to have to do a lot of communication and engagement with our parents to be able to utilize it, impact.
So, what part does the kid actually play in putting this, do they enter any information in the proposal? Are we depending on them to put it all in there, or what? I don't know if it's responsibility they can allow.
It will communicate with campus and pull all of their information, as Dr. Lewis just said. Where they would come in is, if they, for their FASFA application, I mean, they have to do that anyway. But it would all be together, because when you have a student that goes off to college, you fill out your college application one place, and you fill out your FASFA form one place, I mean, it's not all in the same place, and so this would have one place, that everything is there, and it would just be more seamless and friendly for our parents to know what's going on.
What about our middle school kids?
It's six-twelve.
Yeah, I want, well, I mean, they're not fitting to go to college.
No, 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 but there's other aspects, there's other modules and things that the counselors were excited about, being able to use in the scope and sequence of the program.
If there's guidance, lessons, where the students can go to, let's say they go to the career class in sixth, seventh, eighth grade, they can log in and they can, the, the counselor will be able to schedule guided sessions on different guided sessions.
What I'm asking is going to be child's responsibility to do that? I mean, are we going to have to load the site, making sure they do that, or you're just going to leave it up to them?
The counselors would be the ones who would really be instrumental in this, in using this program. And that's who we-
It's sounding like we're depending on the child to do a lot of-
No, it'll all be populated through the, but one thing like a student can do, there's a, a resume builder, so when they start in sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, they'll continue to build their resume, and I know like my son called me last week and asked if I'd help him put together a resume. He's second year of college, so he's going to try to do something, so I'm looking up, but, you know, in this case, these kids will be building a resume starting in middle school, and they'll be saved in there, and, you know, so.
I'm on the Alatuna side, and I'm reading the, the student guide on how they, how they handle the EDOCs, which is the online application process for colleges, online application process for, um, student financing. So this, this is really just a- So this is really just a clearinghouse central for information that they're having to go hither and yon to gather.
As well as a tool for our counselors to use through counseling sessions.
And there's also a SAT class in this. So students will be able to take an SAT prep test, and then there's actually lessons that they can log into this system and take an SAT prep class. So students who are prepared for SAT will be able to...
Can't didn't have a component where they could enter their interests and hobbies and things like that and then recommend it? It would look at their grades, their transcripts, their interests and recommend courses of study for the post-secondary.
There's a lot to it. It's for the counselor's side as well as the students.
You don't ask them for a decision?
No, 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 no. I'm just sharing this with you.
This is information.
It is an information item. Obviously, this is a five-year proposal, six-year proposal, because this would be paid for, first of all, with Title IV phones, not general funds. And it falls within the allowability of Title IV. So this year, to do a soft rollout for all schools, that's what the counselors and the folks who were at our train, our meeting, our presentation suggested when we got feedback from them. And you can see that the remainder of this year would be $16,471. And then the $4,500 would be for professional learning, because you would always need some training. And it's actually $9,000 total, so we will pay part of it the first year and then part of it the first four years implementation. So that would be the $9,000. So that's why that second amount there is $44,030, and then thereafter is $39,530. Obviously, whenever you get a proposal, if you get a proposal for a number of years, consecutive years, you get a better price because you lock in the price. But this is strictly for information.
Here's my thoughts on it. And I've got one, this is senior this year, so the old counselor aspect is huge. I got one of them kind of. And these are all things right now that our counselor has passed with. What we've got roughly, how many is graduating class probably?
Probably about 450.
And how many counselors do we have in that senior class?
Yeah, there's one.
My point, every time we have to do something, it's like, can we, you know, find time to get in, and half the time you go up there to one of these meetings, there's a line out the door trying to get in there. If I could go home and sit down and pull up all this stuff at home, that would be a huge benefit to me, to the child. The SAT prep courses, you know, we're paying for them right now, you know, if you can get those for free. You know, these are things our counselor are doing, but when you've got 400 something students, the efficiency with one counselor is not going to be what you want. Can you hire another counselor for $39,000 a year for all these grades? Now, obviously, I'd like to look a little bit more about this, first things clean on it, but I understand a lot of stuff is duplicated, but I like the fact that it's going to take some of that and move it over here where a child, a parent, or whatever can access and do it without having to stand in line for, you know, half the class to get in the city council or what have you.
It offers a lot. As far as SAT and ACT, if I remember correctly, there were prep courses as well as practice tests, several practice tests for both of those tests. So it does offer...
I just got done filling out the pass, so I've got a little mad.
And you have to do it every year?
That was awful.
Every year.
So that's very private information. So you're, it's just a portal to link you to go to that. There is no storage of information.
It gives you, the way I'm looking at it, it gives you access to a lot of information right now that you've got to go to your counselor, that's your information, say, can I get my this, can I get my that? You know, you'd be able to access it and do it and do one of these things from home, I guess. This will help them be more efficient, I guess.
But you don't understand all of this stuff to get to what you're trying to get...
I was just about to say, Dr. Lee, if I remember correctly, aren't there tutorials? There's tutorials prior to you filling out your FASPA application? Like a little video, and then it gives you the link to click on to go to where you need to fill out your FASPA or apply for college, or building your resume, or whatever. There's little tutorials.
But for parents that, you know, just can't get in on the tutorials, you know, as far as understanding this stuff on how to get to what you're trying to get to. So who is to back this up? Do you still have to go back to this line at the school to stand there with, wait on the counselor?
I would think the counselors and the high school staff would always be there to support those needs. We're not saying this is going to take the place of our campus. Absolutely not. This is just a support thing.
But the intent would also be, students would be very fluid with it, and I would be like, our children have to just have...
What I would like to know a little more about is the middle school piece of it. I'm curious to see how that ties into this. Is it just something they're adding on there and not really the price difference, so we pay a lot extra for that, so we get toward that kind of thing. Definitely benefits the high school part of it. I'm just curious, how do you what, what would you pay after you get in?
The middle school appeared to me was a lot of the career exploration that they're really promoting at the middle school. And then the guided, I know the eighth grade counselor really got excited about the guided piece, that the students would be able to log in and they can prescribe them guided lessons. She just said there's no way they can get around to, when I say guided, that's going to do a classroom meeting with a class of 20 or 30 kids and talking to them about things. She was real excited that this would help them be able to accomplish that with the students at the middle school. She seemed to be the one who was most excited.
She was very excited about it.
Yeah, and it might be, I just, that's part of what I'm talking about.
I'll pinpoint some of that there for you and get that to y'all.
System update. We received some results over the last few, I guess, weeks, maybe months, that I felt like it was good, would be good to share with the board. And just kind of review where we're at in the school year and some of the accomplishments that we've seen, and really just share some of the good news about what's going on in the school system. But I want to start with the destination graduation for college career and life. We know that's our mission. And our vision is creating a stronger community through an equitable and excellent education for every student. And that's what this work is about, to create a better Coffee County, better place for our kids and for our families and for our future. So strategic planning, 2018 through '23, we're in year two of our strategic plan. Let me go to the next slide. And one thing I wanted to make sure everybody is clear on is the fact that we have two high school options in our school system now. We have our traditional comprehensive high school, Coffee High School, and then we have the College and Career Academy. And they're up to about 230 students at the Career Academy, for sure the campus. So there's actually two high schools in Coffee County, and students can choose after they leave eighth grade which high school they want to go to, and two really different experiences. So we're excited about that, about the options. At Coffee High School, we've talked already about the academy work that's going on. Dr. Cummings and his staff are working to get ready to reorganize for this coming year. They've been working all year on it. And we'll, over the next school year, students will transition from George Washington and Coffee High School, and they'll be in one of four academies. And that was another piece of the previous conversation, that this will aid in that with those transitions that we have. Next slide. So how are we doing in regards to meeting our mission? We talked about destination graduation. You'll see that the graduation rate was released earlier this year, and we're at 84.16. It's the highest our graduation rate's ever been. So I want to thank all of our teachers that are here. We've got teachers here and we've got other staff, support staff. Thank y'all for what you do. It's just, it's good to see more students than ever graduating. How are we doing on the College and Career Readiness Performance Index? This is the state report card. And this year, I'm excited to talk about the results. It's something that sometimes it can be controversial because it's debatable about test scores and what they really mean and some of the other components of CCRPI. But this year, we were real excited about the results. You'll see Coffee County elementary scores of 77.5. The state of Georgia's average was 77.1. Middle grade score, 74.6. The state of Georgia average is 72.1. High school score was 77.7. Georgia was 77, and our district score of 77, and the Georgia score was 75.9. So real excited to be above the state average in all of those areas. And if you look at the graduation rate combined with the CCRPI, elementary school, we were above the state average. Middle school, we were above the state average. High school, we were above the state average. As a system, we're above the state average. Four-year graduation rate above the state average, and five-year graduation rate above the state average. So I want to thank once again all of our teachers, all of our staff, all of our community for coming together to support our schools. We are achieving higher than the state in elementary, middle, and high school as measured by the CCRPI for the first time. This is the first time ever we were achieving above the state. And if y'all remember, board members who were on the board when we went charter system, that was one of the parts that we had to agree to, that we would agree to score above the state average as a system. And I can remember there being some like that, oh, you know, that could be tough to be above the state average and everything. And this year we were, so that's exciting news. Coffee County beating the odds. Now, the Department of Education publishes something, and this was released, like I said, a month or two ago. And the beating the odds report, what the State Department does, is they take schools that are like us, that have similar demographics, similar kids, similar community as far as poverty is concerned, and they look at like schools, and they compare you to like schools, demographically, economically, that are like you. And so they rate you as either beating the odds, which means you've done better than the schools that are like you, or you're meeting the expectations, which means you're doing good, you're meeting the expectations, or you're not meeting the expectations, all right? You're below where y'all be. So I was excited to see that we had six schools this year that are beating the odds. Ambrose Elementary School, Roxy Mary Hayes, Coffee Middle School, Eastside Elementary School, Nichols Elementary School, and Satilla Elementary School are all beating the odds. So that's great. Half our schools are beating the schools that are like them when it comes to academics and student success. Schools within expected range. Coffee High Schools within expected range, George Washington Carver's within expected range, Indian Creek, West Green, West Side, Wiregrass are all within expected range. So that was a good place to see them too. And then reward schools, we had two schools that were recognized by the State Department. We had them here a few weeks back. Nichols Elementary School, Satilla Elementary School recognizes reward schools. And then we had zero schools that were below expected range. So we were real excited to see that and wanted to make sure that we share that good news with everybody. Now, what are some other things that we're seeing success in? Art. Our students who are involved with the art class at Coffee High School, Daniella Cruz, her art piece has made it all the way to the state competition. Kevis Washington, his art has made it all the way to the state competition cross-country. We had boys individual region champion cross-country. We had the girls individual region champion, and we had the team region championship cross-country. FBLA, we've got the high school south area vice president. FBLA, we've got the middle level state vice president. And FBLA, we have the, Coffee Middle School was named the 2020 chapter of the year, so we were real excited about that. Football, Coffee Records, six consecutive top 10 finishes. We've never had six consecutive top 10 finishes, so football had a really good year. In livestock, we had a state champion last weekend, so we're real excited about Joe Smith won the state champion hog show. So swimming, we had the region championship at boys, and we had the region champions and girls. TSA, we've got the state treasurer, or the Technology Student Association. Vex Robotics, we had two, not only did we have the state hog show champion, but we had two robots make it to the state championship. Now, they weren't the state champions, but they made it. And we had wrestling region champions, duel and traditional. That was the first ever for Coffee High. We've never won the region champion flat out in wrestling at Coffee High School. We won the region champion in duels and traditional. And then we had Taon Wimberly, who won the state championship in wrestling. And Michael Berry, the top of all office, just named Georgia advisor of the year for the state of Georgia. So a lot of good things happening in the Coffee County schools, and we just wanted to thank everybody who's involved, and thank all of our parents and students for supporting what's going on, and thank our board for supporting what's going on. So thank you. The next item is public participation. And then we've got executive session, and I would ask the board that we move to an executive session to discuss personnel, compensation, appointment, hiring, disbaraction, dismissal, periodic evaluation of public officer or employee.